And so, I have the privilege to bring together the meeting of October 22, 2019 of the school board. And I'm gonna ask that those of you who are able to rise and join in the pledge of allegiance, led by our own board member, James Golden.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, ungod, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Board Member James Golden. We now have student celebration. And Mr. Mike Barber, as he always does, does a great job with these affairs. And thank you, Mr. Barber.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Board Members. Superintendent Saunders, we have three recognitions tonight and they're all very special ones, so I know you're gonna enjoy these. The first recognition has to do with Manatee Technical College. All of us know that Manatee Technical College is the premier technical college in the country. And its students compete and succeed and really excel in not only national and international competitions. And so, to tell us a little bit about some of the students that from MTC that we're gonna honor tonight, I wanna introduce MTC Director Dr. Valerie Vian. So, Doctor?
Thank you, Mike, and thank you all for the opportunity to present our students this evening. The first person I would like to present to you is Matt Vreeman, along with his instructor Vera Bernenah. Come on up. Matt placed in the top 20 in Web Technologies at the 2019 World Skills Competition in Russia. Matt? Matt is a 2017 graduate of Ms. Vera's Web Development Career Certificate Program at Manatee Technical College, and we are very, very proud of him.
We were so impressed by the fact that, you know, Matthew did so well in this competition that we made him and his teacher the subject of our latest WeManatee video. So, we wanna share that with you all.
My name is Matthew Vreeman. I am from Burlington, Florida. In August of 2019, I competed at the World Skills Competition in Kazan, Russia.
United States of America!
I was the United States competitor in the Web Development Competition. Growing up, I wasn't entirely sure what I wanted to do with my life. MTC is where I learned my skills. My web development instructor, Ms. Vera, was a huge part of why I succeeded in the class.
It's probably the most rewarding part of being a teacher, because when students tell, "Thank you very much, you changed my life", it cannot compare with anything. I came from Russia, Moscow. I started this program from scratch in 2001. That development course is a very comprehensive course, which includes all aspects of web design and web development. Matthew, from the very first day of his studentship, I understood that that young gentleman, at the time he was only 16 years old, will be a person who will go places.
Through MTC, I competed at the regional, the state, and the national levels of Skills USA. And that's what led to me being invited to be on the World Skills USA team. It's the top developers in the world competing against each other.
They carefully select based on so many variables to find the person who will represent the United States at international competition. And we were very, very happy to know that.
The actual competition for World Skills consisted of four days of competition. In the Web Technologies Competition, there was a total of 32 competitors, all from different countries. I came in 18th place.
It's the most wonderful thing when you do what you like and you like what you do. And I hope my students will find that job.
The skills I learned will be applicable for my current job, for future jobs. It was definitely, the time spent training for this competition really helped a lot for my future.
I'm really proud of Matthew. He is absolutely wonderful young gentleman. It's not because he likes web design, but because, besides of that, he is a wonderful, great person.
We are the school district of Manatee County.
Thank you very much for giving me an opportunity to say a few words about my class, my job, and Matthew, who is one of the most remembered students which I ever had. And I'm very proud of him, I'm proud of my job, and thank you very much for your attention.
Matthew said he's fine. If y'all could have a seat real quick and then we're gonna...
The next individual I'd like to recognize is Akira Sanders. And unfortunately, her instructor Lauren Hutchison could not be here this evening, but Akira placed second in medical reading in the 2019 HOSA Future Professional, Health Professionals International Leadership Conference in Orlando. Akira graduated from our optometric assisting program in June and has taken time off from work tonight from the IAS associates to be here this evening. Akira? Our next person is Brenda Bashkahey and her instructor David Harris. Brenda placed in the top 10 in the pharmacology knowledge at the 2019 HOSA Future Health Professionals International Leadership Conference. Brenda graduated from our pharmacy technology program in June and is working at Walgreens where she has already received a promotion. And last but not least, Vincent Monzo with the instructor Joel Hall, placed first in the nation in inter-networking at the 2019 Skills USA National Championships in Louisville, Kentucky. Vincent graduated from our network support services program last year, has earned national certifications as a Cisco Certified Network Associate and a CompTIA Network Plus.
I just wanna present each of the students with a little token of our appreciation and hopes that you'll remember the school district of Manatee County and especially MTC. But let me give this to you. Do we have any parents here this evening? If you'd stand up? Congratulations. Okay. This next group that we're gonna recognize, it's always tough to get them in one place together, but it's always nice when we do. They tell me that one of the great things about their jobs is that they have a lot of free time. But I wanna say that the month of October is National Principals Month, as recognized by the American Federation of School Administrators. And it seeks to honor principals for the significant impact they have on the safety, success, and well-being of students in Manatee County, the state of Florida, and the nation. So, I'm gonna ask all our principals that are here tonight if you'd stand up. Okay, this is the hard part. You're gonna each come down here, one at a time. You're gonna introduce yourself, your school, and if you'd like to say how long you've been with the school district, that would be fine. And then, we're gonna line up here so we can get a photo when you're all down here.
Anthony Lasada, Principal of Louise R. Johnson K-8 School of International Studies. A lot to remember that. And I've been with the district 26 years.
Okay, great.
Scott Cooper, Principal of Electa Lee Magnet Middle School. And I've been with the district since 2000.
Kate Barlog, Principal of Carlos E. Hale Middle School. And I've been with the district eight years.
Good evening, I'm Kimberlin Zenon Richardson, Principal of Braden River Middle School. This is my 24th year in the district and first year as principal.
Hi, I'm Jenny Grimes. I'm the principal at Palmasola. I'm a product of Manatee County Schools, went to Moody SUG and Manatee High. Go Canes, go! And I have been employed by the school board since 1992.
I'm Dave Marshall, Principal of Jean Wood Elementary. I also am a product of Manatee County Schools. This is my 39th year in Manatee County.
My name is Carl Lockman. I'm the principal at Palmetto High School. I'm also a product of Manatee County Schools by way of Anna Maria King and Manatee High School. And I'm in my 21st year here in the county.
Evening, everybody. My name is Craig Little. I'm the principal at Parrish Community High School. And I think it's 19 years in the district so far.
Hello, everyone. Joe Hogan, the principal at Stewart Elementary. And this is year 20 for me in the school district of Manatee County.
Good evening. Scott Boyce, Principal of Jesse P. Miller Elementary School. 27 years in the district and 17 as principal.
Wendell Butler, Principal of Bay Shore High School. I too am a product of Manatee County Schools, Wayclan, Basha, Braden River Middle, and Southeast High School. This is my 16th year in the district.
Dustin Dahlquist, Principal at Lakewood Ranch High School. This is my 23rd year in the district. And at one point, Wendell Butler was a student of mine.
Good evening, I'm Kristen Kryling. I'm principal over at Martha B. King Middle School. I am also a product of the Manatee County School System, Bay Shore Elementary, SUG, and Bay Shore High School. And Scott Boyce at Nolan was one of my teachers.
Good evening. Cheryl McGrew, Principal of Gilbert W. McNeil Elementary. And I have been in the district for about 30 years.
Hello, Carol Ricks, Principal at Mayaka City Elementary School. This is my 11th year in the district and first year as principal.
Good evening. My name is Kathy Price. I am the principal of Robert E. Willis Elementary. And this is my 14th year in Manatee County.
I'm David Underhill. I'm principal at Manatee High School. And I'm young, 'cause I've only been here 20 years.
Jackie Featherston, Principal, Anna Maria Elementary. This is my 40th year in the school district.
Good evening, Sharon Scarborough. Honored to be principal of Braden River High School. Go Pirates, product of Manatee County. And this is my 25th year in Manatee County.
Good evening. I'm Shelby Benge. I'm the principal of Blanche Daughtry Elementary. This is my 16th year in Manatee County.
Good evening, Michelle Meiler. I'm the principal at Palmetto Elementary. And I'm still the baby in the district, opposite of her only six years.
Good evening, Brad Scarborough. Principal of Buffalo Creek Middle School. I am a product of Manatee County as well, and this is my 27th year.
Greg Sanders, Stebree's Elementary School. This is my 22.3 years.
Pat Stream, very proud principal of Rogers Garden Bullock Elementary. And I think it's my 32nd year.
Good evening, James Horner. Principal of Florrie and Abel Elementary School. And I've been here 27 years.
Good evening, Mike Messiello. Principal at Ballard Elementary School. This is my 23rd year in the district. And I also was a product of Manatee County Schools, Miller Elementary, SUG Middle School, and Manatee High.
Hi, it's Mario Mendoza. Proud principal of Basha Elementary. And I've been with this school district for nine years now.
I'm Bernadette Fletcher. I'm the principal of Bay Shore Elementary. And I've been with the district for 10 years.
Angela Hodges Lindsay. I'm the proud principal of the new middle school, Dr. Mona Jane Middle School. I've been with the district 32 years. I'm a product of Manatee County, Blanche Daughtry, Jesse P. Miller, WD SUG, and Southeast High School.
Good evening, I'm Ann McDonald. I'm the principal at SUG Middle School. Been in the district 31 years. And I am a product also of Bay Shore Elementary, Harley Middle, and Bay Shore High School.
Scott Boyce, Principal of Nolan Middle School. Go Colts, and 37 years in Manatee County Schools.
Hi, proud principal of Tara Elementary School. This is my 17th year in the district and also a product of Manatee County. Graduate from Manatee High School.
Hi, I'm Lynn Menard. I'm the proud principal of Robert H. Prine Elementary. And I'm a product of Palmview Elementary and Palmetto High School.
Hi, I'm Mary Beth Mason. I'm the principal of Samusette Elementary School. And this is my seventh year in the district.
Valerie Vian, the director at Manatee Technical College. And this is my 19th year in the district.
Good evening, Rosa Fason. This is my 10th year, and I am the proud principal of Southeast High School.
Hi, Kimberly Organic, Principal at Onico Elementary School. This is my fifth year in Manatee County in the state of Florida.
All right, great. Well, we wanna get a photo of all the principals up here, so I'm gonna need y'all to kinda come in here. And I'm gonna ask the people who are closer to the ceiling to kinda move to the back.
Go to the front.
Kinda come over here and...
People closer to the ceiling.
All right, come on, guys. Get cozy.
I wish they'd just sit down.
Thank you.
Thank you. You all brought gifts, didn't ya?
All right, come on, Charlie, read it.
I swear, I'm not making you stay for this.
But it's good news.
Wow, this is not awkward at all. As long as everybody's here, though, I do wanna say, I mean, we just heard, like, this is hundreds of years of institutional knowledge. And superintendents and board members come and go, but you guys are the ones who have always been here and will remain to be. So, thank you for that. And I was just telling Jim upstairs, I don't know how you guys do what you do. Like, these, you know, 70-hour work weeks. You get like two weeks off, and you're probably not even off for that two weeks. So, from the board, thank you all for what you do. I'm gonna read this quickly, not out of disrespect, but just so we can get this awkward moment over as quickly. "Whereas, principals are educational visionaries, instructional and assessment leaders, disciplinarians, community builders, budget analysts, facilities managers, and administrators of legal and contractual obligations. And whereas, principals work collaboratively with teachers and parents to develop and implement a clear mission, high curriculum standards, and performance goals. And whereas, principals create school environments to facilitate great teaching and learning and continuous school improvement. And whereas, principals play a vital role in protecting and monitoring student safety on school grounds. And whereas, the celebration of Florida Principals Month honors elementary, middle, and high school principals and recognizes the importance of principals in ensuring that every child has access to a high-quality education. And whereas, the Florida Association of School Administrators, the National Association of Secondary School Principals, and the National Association of Elementary School Principals have declared the month of October 2019 as National Principals Month. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the school board of Manatee County that the month of October 2019 shall be known, designated, and set aside as Florida Principals Month, adopted with a quorum present and voting this 22nd day of October 2019." Thank you all. I think you're the longest-serving, so that goes... Oh, give it to Jackie. It goes on Jackie's line.
I heard that. 39.
Jackie was 40.
Say hello to Tony. Congratulations.
I had to like how many Canes there were, though.
At least seven.
There were a lot of Hurricanes.
Couple of Bruins.
Go Canes, go! I heard a Tiger. There was at least one Tiger.
Lots of homegrown.
I think a brigade, yes. Yeah, something like that. It's at least a platoon. Well, it's pretty nice. At least, yeah. It's a big operation.
Okay, that was, you know, I really like the way that worked. I think we're gonna do that from now on, where everybody just is, before they leave, they just turn around and listen to the song.
Take a picture and turn around.
This next group has to do with volunteers. It just happened to be brought to our attention recently by a board member. I don't wanna name names, but it was Reverend Golden. He ran into this group, and we, in our office, were aware of him. Deborah Perry Gambino, who oversees our volunteer groups, has worked with them and has great things to say about them. So, I'm gonna ask the Sugar team to come forward. They brought some special guests with them. Let me just tell you that Sugar stands for showing unconditional goodwill and respect. It is a 501(c)(3) organization out of Lakewood Ranch, and it's run by Stephanie Guido and Ally Pereira. Is that correct? Okay. And Sugar specializes in offering volunteer opportunities for young people, such as students who are looking to earn community service hours. And that's a really special niche in our community, and they do some really special things. And Stephanie's gonna tell us a little bit about it.
First, I wanna say thank you so much for the opportunity to let us share some Sugar with you today. Sugar Volunteers, it's our mission to connect children with volunteer opportunities. We started Sugar in October of 2017, and since then, we have successfully supported over 85 local nonprofits. We have collectively contributed over 3,000 community service hours and have had over 600 student volunteers participate in our events. It's been super fun. The ways we do this, they're pretty simple. It's so much fun for all the kids. They find us online, they sign up, they show up. Some of them include our sugar-coated cleanup programs, which take place at parks and/or the beaches. We try to have an educational component to every single event that we do, so we have fun while we are doing beautification projects throughout the community, whether we're cleaning up or planting flowers, depending on where we are. We do sugar-on-site programs, which work with a variety of local nonprofits, where we show up at different locations. We come as a big group, sharing lots of energy. We either dance with assistive living facility residents, or we'll feed homeless people, or we'll sort clothes, depending on what nonprofit we're at. And some of our personal favorite, most fun, is what we call the Share the Sugar Program, which takes place at Lakewood Ranch Town Hall. We kinda open it up. Sometimes we have 100 students participate at one time. Mr. Reverend Golden came and joined us. We made 600-bag lunches. And we kinda set it up assembly-style. We turned on the music. We had peanut butter jelly time. Every 100 bags that got completed. And it was a lot of fun. So, for us, Sugar Volunteers is a great opportunity that we feel so important to give to students, to teach them how to pay it forward, and really make a difference in the community. And they love it. So, thank you. Thanks so much for the opportunity.
Let me do this. Y'all line up across, because we are going to get a picture with y'all. I'm going to want to give you a picture. It might be a little bit big, but you'll grow into it.
That is cute.
And I'm going to ask y'all to hold your shirts up while we take this photo, okay?
Jim, you can join us, right?
Yeah, don't cover your face.
Yeah. Sugar, sugar. The next thing on our agenda is reports and presentations. And I think you are all aware that Manatee School District is a proud member of the Central Florida Public School Board Coalition. Excuse me?
I think first we have to approve the agenda.
I think you're right. Okay, we're rushing. We've got to approve what we're going to do here. So, let me, you know, share with you, we don't have...
There are no amendments to the agenda?
There are no amendments. Okay. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Mr. Minor, I have a motion to amend the agenda. Sorry, I should have had this before. Mr. Minor, I'm asking to remove the two items related to legal fees. We have two consent items for two separate law firms, and I would like to make a motion that we move those to new business for discussion.
Okay, there's been a motion by Board Member Kennedy to amend the presented agenda to, I guess, remove from the consent agenda and to put on non-consent agenda, separate new business items. Is that correct? Okay.
Second that.
Okay, it's been seconded by Board Member Hope.
And I move to amend the amendment to remove item number twenty from the consent agenda, because we will need to amend it based on our meeting this afternoon.
Second that motion.
Amendment to your... Okay, so now we're on the amendment to the amendment, Mr. Kennedy.
Okay, there's been a, an amendment, a motion made by Board Member Hope to amend Board Member Kennedy's motion to amend the agenda. And will you restate that for me, please?
So, Mr. Kennedy's motion was, or is, to remove the two items from the consent agenda related to increasing attorney's fees. And then I amended, we are now on my amendment to his motion, to also remove item number twenty from the consent agenda and put it on new business as we will need to amend item number twenty. So, that is the motion to amend the motion to amend, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, well, thank you, Board Member Hope. All right, now, is there discussion? The chair here, oh, okay.
Just for clarity, Minor, item six and seven.
Okay. We're talking about removing item six and seven from the consent agenda, and also item number twenty from the consent agenda, to put them under new business, non-consent items. Do I, am I restating that accurately?
Consent items removed from the consent, correct.
Okay.
So, now we're on my amendment to amend, and there's no discussion, so you may call the question.
Okay, I guess we're going to do it, the most recent amendment first, okay? The chair hearing, no further discussion. The chair will call the question. All those in favor of supporting the motion made by Board Member Hope, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay. The motion by Mr. Hope's has been unanimously five-zero approved. Now, we'll go to the main motion, that I understand was made by Board Member Kennedy, which is removal of two items concerning attorney fees, and also from the consent agenda, to place it in the agenda under new business, non-consent items. Is there any further discussion concerning that? Chair hearing, now the chair will call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay. It carries unanimously five-zero. The agenda is now amended. Now, I'll go back to the main motion. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as has been amended? It's been moved by Board Member Kennedy and seconded by Vice Chair Messenger to approve the agenda as amended. Okay, thank you all very much. Now, surprise, the next item...
Need to take a vote.
Okay, I thought we had approved...
The agenda as amended.
Okay. All those in favor of the agenda as amended, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay. It passes unanimously. Okay, now, backing up. We have this item called Reports and Presentations, and of the Central Public School Board Coalition, which, for those who may not know, but I think most of you do know, Manatee School District is part of the Central Florida Public School Board Coalition, consisting of fourteen school districts that stretch from the Gulf of Mexico to the Atlantic Ocean. And it includes the families, the students of, families of over one million students, the largest districts being Hillsborough and Orange. It goes as far as north as Marion County, and south is Highlands and Indian River. We are on the western part of it, along with Pasco County, but it is a big portion of the state of Florida. And it's been my privilege to, you know, represent all of you in the district at this, the get-together of the meetings, which usually are held in Orlando, but have been held in other places. The last meeting was requested to be moved to Osceola County, to Kissimmee, for a special event, because the, because that district has gone ahead and built a energy-neutral high school. What that means is, the amount of energy used by that high school is the same or less than the amount of energy that's actually generated, you know, to run that high school. And this has bearing on what we do here in Manatee County, not only in our schools, but in our community in the whole. And I think it might be also said, as a county as a whole, the state as a whole, our country as a whole. It comes down to global warming. And I think there has been kind of a great shift in thought about this in the community, and I think in the nation, that it is a threat to us as a county, as a state, as a country, as a world, that we need to look at ourselves and see what we can do to stop the warming, the loss of ice packs up in the icebergs and the poles. And it comes down, you know, everything to the individual basis, you know, to a county, and what are we going to do about it? And I think there's not only me who thought that, you know, who can be the leader in Manatee County in dealing with, you know, global warming, and with, you know, the rise of the sea, you know, which is literally at our doorsteps, and how it affects not only our island communities, but us as a whole. And so, I felt that this landmark high school with zero energy use was something that I called for special attention. It is not the first in the nation, but one of the first. The first was up in Arlington, Virginia, but it is truly the first one in Florida. And I think you can appreciate, I get tired, worn out, you know, fighting I-75 and I-4, you know, going to these meetings, and so, I put out a call for volunteers to ride with me to this special meeting, and to maybe do the driving, and maybe to, you know, soak up some of the information, to, you know, help me share, you know, with the community here, what they're doing there, to see if maybe we can learn from it, maybe do it better, how it might apply to us. I think everybody realizes that we are in a high-growth community. We are, this year, we opened three high schools. That's not going to be the end of it. We're already talking about additions and maybe new schools now. And how would learning something about energy efficiency in a school district with their schools might be helpful to us in saving money for the taxpayers by being energy efficient? How it might improve our environment? How we might be an example for other school districts? How we might also be an example, you know, for other businesses in Manatee County and along the Gulf Coast? I say that when I say be an example. We are the largest business in Manatee County. We have the largest budget, the largest payroll. We, we're kind of the big gorilla in what goes on. And so, I thought that going, making this trip and inspecting this school was extra special. And fortunately, there are three people who agreed to go up to this meeting of the Central Florida Public School Board Coalition. And the coalition, that's, I think, demonstrates one of the main benefits. We're a member to learn and to share with other school districts, you know, what we're doing to everybody, you know, be better. And I've asked my three writers, fellow travelers, to come up and share their thoughts about what they, how they saw this school and how it might apply to me. And someone you probably don't know, and people at home may not be familiar with the name, but one was Glenn Gibellina. And I don't think he's missed a meeting, or many meetings in the last few years, to come up and talk about topics of importance to our district and our community. And one of them has been energy efficiency. And I'm going, the other is Steve Levkowitz, I'm going, I'm messing up his name, and he's a teacher in one of our schools, and he's been concerned about, you know, how we make our schools the best for the community. And he offered to go. And then we have a very, we're very fortunate to have is our Director of Strategic Planning, and this certainly falls into that territory. And Kevin Chapman, who is with us tonight as well. And I'm going to ask if all three of them could come up, and we'll start out with Glenn to, you know, take two or three minutes and just, well, you don't have to all come up at once, or come on up once, and they'd rather have the camera on. Glenn, can you come on up and share kind of your thoughts, and Steve, and about what you think might be worth, you know, sharing with our community? Thank you.
For the record, Glenn Gibellina, and it was an extraordinary tour, I have to admit. We met in a parking lot at 6:45 a.m., left promptly at 7 a.m., and got there shortly after nine, only got lost twice, so it was pretty good. And it is a phenomenal school, not only from an energy standpoint, but from the tilt-wall construction, the use of the buildings and the orientation, of meeting with the solar experts, and putting the solars in the right direction. Every square inch of these roofs have been used, built. And the nice part about this is that they used a ballast system on the roofs for the racking, so there were no penetrations in the roof. So, not only you've eliminated ninety-nine percent of your leaks, and as you see is the roof here, that those solar panels are sucking up not only the sunshine, but the UV rays that will protect that roof. Normally, that would, TPO roof would be twenty years. You're probably going to get forty years out of that roof with no leaks. Phenomenal building. The architect was there. We sat down with him for at least an hour. He walked us through everything, and he was an energy guy, he knew all the numbers. And I am here to tell you that a nine-point-two-year payback is what this school is going to reap. That's eleven percent return on our money in renewables. So, again, the tilt-wall construction, the tightness of the building, the air exchange, the little thing by that white van, if you see it, that's where the food truck comes in, and they also had solar power there for, well, extremely fortunate enough to go on. And I thank you, Chairman Minor, and the crew that went with us. We had a blast, and I just hope that we move forward in that direction. And again, the tightness of the building and the renewable. So, renewables is the only one that makes us money. Eleven percent return. I don't think you're going to find that in the stock market or anywhere else, so, let's move forward, and it's a phenomenal school. Again, thank you.
Thank you. Steve?
It was a pleasure to make this trip with these gentlemen. It was definitely an interesting trip. The building is, like Glenn said, it's a, really a phenomenal building. The takeaways I took from this thing was, it's not just about the construction and the solar panels, it was the way the building was built. The tilt-wall construction, as they pointed out, is a more cost-effective way of building a building. The amount of detail that went into the building is what reduced the cost. The architect, Pete Hall, he restated that several times. There's nothing major in the construction of this building, other than the detailing, to make sure that everything is sealed properly, that there's no infiltration of air into the building, and they used other sources of AC systems that they found were more efficient, and they could keep equipment off the roof, so that they could use the solar system. The other thing that, you know, was brought up is, this is operating, or capital money. When you build these buildings and you put this in, it was a five percent premium on construction without the solar panels. With the solar panels, it was a nine percent premium on the construction. But it's coming out of the, it's coming out of the capital budget, but what it's doing is returning money to your operating budget. So, we're always looking for money to give raises to teachers and aides and parents and bus drivers, and by investing in this kind of construction, you're actually increasing the dollars in your operating budget over the long term. And I thought that was a great return and a great way to look at this. The other aspect of it was, it was, it's a little bit more secure. It's got a one-way, one-access entry. They went vertical instead of horizontal, which also reduces costs over the long term. So, I think this is really a building that we should be looking at and studying, and we should be conferring with this architect. This guy was impressive. He knew what was going on, he knew what, where the future is headed and how they're looking at these things. And he had a quote, and I don't know if Kevin will remember it, but it had to do with, "We've always done things the way we've done them, and that's the biggest hindrance to always improving things and moving forward." So, I hope we can stop that with the whole, this is the way we've done it all the time, and start looking at different ways to do it.
Thank you, Steve.
The other quote he said was, "It's complex, but not complicated." And it was a couple of facts they haven't said. So, Gilbane built it, and I know Gilbane has built a few of our buildings. It's seventy-six percent less energy than a regular school. It cost fifteen million to build. It's essentially a forty-five-thousand-square-foot building. It does not have a cafeteria, does not have athletic fields, does not have a gym. So, they figure out how to do all that in a school, and I can tell you all that one day, but it's interesting, but they, it's all complies with all the standards. But so, it's essentially a forty-five-thousand-square-foot building, and the solar panels on top are warranted for as long as the roof, so they're guaranteed for over twenty years. So, the company, it's called Light Years, based here in Florida, and completely warranted. So, sometimes there's a concern about fixing solar panels. Some of the other facts, fifteen million, so that's, it's ten percent premium on that, so, one and a half million dollars more they paid to build this building, but Gilbane built it. In nine years, they'll get that money back, and then from then on, they'd say it's a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars a year in energy fees. So, the point that Steve made, that's a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars a year that can go to something else. So, again, they, you know, they get the cafeterias by a food truck, athletics is done by the high school next door, and the gym is done online. So, that's how they kind of get around some of those things. It's built for six-hundred-and-twenty-five students. They will only max out at five hundred. It's close to that. They're going to add junior year next year, so it'll be three years in there. And so, you can't really go up. You go this way, really, because you need more square footage for solar panels, but it was, it's something to look at, for sure. And again, you're paying a ten percent premium to make sure, and it's essentially, the more energy you, it makes sense, more energy you save inside, then the more, less energy leaks out, and that's where they get the savings. So, and it's all about, because I wanted to know who can... So, and it's all about, because I wanted to know who constructed it, and when I heard it was Gilbane, then I, you know, I thought it was some Spanish company or, you know, specialized company.
Rhode Island.
Yeah, yeah. Right, it's, it's somebody we're very familiar with. So those are the, those are the facts, I think, that we all laid out. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I think we should see if it fits on the back partial with elementary.
Thank, thank you very much. The, you know, I want to just give a little bit of acknowledgement. The, okay, okay, what, the, we did, the first thing that we had was a tour of the building. And it's three floors, it, I ought to, it's called Neo City Academy, you know, High School. And after that and answering questions while we were in the tour, and they do have an elevator, we, as a group, just, you know, just the four of us, met for another hour, you know, sort of privately with the architect, Pete Hall, and also with the school principal, Mike Meacham, and to, you know, answer questions. I, it was, it was really a thrill, because, boy, this, this is all new to me and my, my comrades who were with me. And I, I think we were all kind of in awe that they could pull this off and do it in a very short period of time. What, in about a year, they, they put it together. What, I want to, Deborah Pace, Dr. Pace, who our superintendent is good friends with, could not have been more helpful and receptive to our being there. Mark Clinch, who I, I've known who is Chief of Facilities, you know, I asked him, gee, you got an RFQ you could send, and so we can learn from that. There it comes. The, everybody there was just as helpful as we could. In the, in their RFQ, they, they said they, they wanted to have high performance per square inch, solar-ready buildings with ability to achieve zero energy, zero energy. That is, the, the amount of energy generated by solar panels or something else would be as much as the energy to do the lights, run the air conditioning and everything else. This was a requirement that they were asking of any architect, you know, builder. It's, the energy management would include two-way electric service meters, so, you know, how much they're generating and how much they're using to, you know, verify that it complied with, you know, their requirements and that they're gonna make money on this. I, I, I'm kind of a construction, not construction-versed, let's put it, that's the kindest word I say it. So there's a lot of terms that I, I wasn't familiar with. And, you know, such as EUI. What is EUI? Energy Use Intensity. And the, the, and I guess part of the, the, the idea of the construction was to drive, drive that down. And the national average for EUI in buildings is 68. Florida is doing a lot better, you know, 58. This Neo City Academy High School is 16. I mean, it's, it's using that much less, you know, energy because of the way they planned it and constructed it, and then they overcome that with the solar panels. So I think it's something to consider when we're, you know, thinking about building additions, building new schools, we take a second look at it, how in the long run do we make it efficient and save our, our taxpayers money? Okay, that's the end of the reports. Did you have some questions you wanted to ask? Some of my compatriots who might be better versed in answering it? Was there a hands up? Okay, we'll move on. Thank you very much for the opportunity of representing you over there. Now, I think the next thing is approval of the minutes. Does the superintendent have a recommendation?
Yes, I recommend the approval of the minutes from October 8th, 2019 workshop and regular meeting.
So moved. Second?
Okay, it's been moved by Board Member Hope's and seconded by Board Member Kennedy to approve the recommendation of the superintendent. Is there any discussion? The chair here is none, the chair will call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion is approved unanimously, 5-0. Thank you very much. Now we'll get to the consent items, as amended. Does the superintendent have a recommendation?
Yes, I recommend the approval of the consent agenda for October 22nd, 2019.
So moved. Second?
Okay, it has, the superintendent's recommendation has been moved by Board Member Hope's and seconded by Board Member Kennedy. Is there discussion? The chair hearing none, the chair will call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, nay. If the motion passes unanimously. The next item is to remove, concerns removing from the table, item 24 at the September, from the, September 24 meeting. Is there a motion to remove from the table that?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I move that we remove from the table the tentative District Educational Facilities Plan.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved by Board Member Hope's, seconded by Vice Chair Messenger to approve, to remove, excuse me, from the table approval of the Tennessee District Educational Facilities Plan. Is there discussion? Chair hearing none, the chair will call the question. All those in favor of approval of the motion to remove it from the table, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries unanimously. So it is removed, you know, from the table, and I assume that we can proceed with that item of business at this time.
Yeah.
Okay, I, I'm asking our, our, our board attorney. Mr. Di, is it?
The pleasure of the board.
Okay, we've removed it, okay? Any objection to proceeding with that item of business now from any board member? Chair hearing none, okay, we'll proceed. Is there a motion, does the superintendent have a recommendation regarding approval of the Tennessee District Educational Facilities Plan?
Yes, I recommend the approval of the tentative District Educational Facilities Plan.
So moved. Second?
It's been moved by Board Member Hope's, seconded by Board Member Kennedy to approve the superintendent's recommendation. Is there discussion? Okay, Vice Chair Messenger.
This was the documents that we couldn't submit because the window wasn't open. When did the window officially open? When did the website open to allow you to even do this?
Last week, and there's.
Yeah, could you come down?
It opened last week officially, and they're still having issues with it. We were corresponding with DOE today regarding them updating their work plan. We actually updated the information we presented to you to have actual figures in it, but DOE is still in the process of getting their system to upload the correct information.
And I really appreciate you answering all my questions today at the workshop, really, because it, they kind of coincided. So when do you expect that you will be able to upload this to the state?
In the next few days. It has to have board approval.
Right.
And today they said that it should be shortly.
I'm hopeful. That's what they said.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, Board Member Golden?
With respect to the facilities plan, has any of the information that we received tonight in terms of solar capabilities improving the quality of the construction that we're planning here, has any of that been incorporated into the planning, or is it too late? Or will it matter with, with this particular facilities plan that we're preparing?
Okay, Madam Superintendent?
None of that is in our five-year capital plan or in the documents. However, whenever we are constructing a new building or if we're renovating a roof, if the board would like us to pursue the cost of, of making a facility of that nature, then we can certainly cost that out, and the board can choose for us to amend our capital dollars to, to do so.
As a follow-up to that.
Okay, Board Member Golden.
Do we really want to do this every time, each time, case by case, as opposed to saying that we would like to incorporate in our planning, our capital planning, a consideration of the impact of different sources of energy for that particular facility? It, it just seems to me that we ought to at least consider alternative designs, alternative costs, and not have to do that with each one. That ought to just come with the territory now that we say we're trying to become more energy-conscious. That's.
Madam Superintendent?
We are working with Kevin with our strategic plan.
Who's Kevin?
Kevin Chapman, our Director of Strategic Planning.
I don't know first.
With all of our, I apologize for that, with all of our focus groups, we do have an energy conservation item on there, so we are hoping to develop language that the board will approve, so that's our standard operating work. In some cases, it could be more expensive to automatically go with solar panels. I, I'm not saying we won't do that, but I think when we finish our strategic plan, if that's the expectation, then we need to at least come to the table with options of energy efficiency, and here's the cost, and here are the things that we can put in, whether it's LED lighting, solar panels, you know, there's a variety of things. But we are trying to embed that in our next strategic plan so that you're right, it's our way of work and we don't have to point it out at every building or, or every new construction we're doing.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Okay, and I, I need to apologize, when they, my, my three comments got through, I should have thanked them. You know, it's Kevin Chapman, our strategic planner, thank you very much. Glenn Gibellina, citizen, and our, our teacher, Steve Moskowitz, and thank you very much, guys. The trip really would not have been anywhere near as fruitful by my going up there, so thank you. Okay, we're still on the motion to approve the district educational facilities. Is there any other comments or questions? The chair hearing none, the chair will call the question. All those in favor of the approval, or of approving the motion to approve, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion passes 5-0. The next one is another item of removal from the table, an item concerning approval of the school capacity program. Does the superintendent have a recommendation with respect to removing this from the table?
I think it's ours.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Chairman, that we remove the school capacity program approval from the table.
Okay, thank you. It's been moved by Board Member Hope's, seconded by Board Member Kennedy to remove from the table the item of approval of the school capacity program. Is there any discussion? The chair hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion passes unanimously to approve the school capacity program, or to remove it from the table, excuse me, I'm getting ahead of myself. Okay, does the superintendent have a recommendation concerning approval of the school capacity program?
Yes, I recommend the approval of the school capacity program.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we, move that we approve the school capacity program for this fiscal year.
Okay, it's been moved by Board Member Hope's, is seconded by Board Member Kennedy to approve the superintendent's recommendation of approval of the school capacity program. Is there any discussion? The chair hearing none, the chair calls the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. It passes 5-0 unanimously. Thank you. The next item is new business, items pulled from consent. And we have two items. One was a motion by board, the first one was, I don't know how we should take this, but I guess it was items 20 and 67, is that correct?
Yes.
We had a couple from earlier.
I'm gonna need a little help here with.
Number six.
Number six, okay.
Now, don't we still have armed security guard job description?
No.
No?
We had five and six, I believe, and then 20.
Or six, seven. Six, seven, and 20. Six, seven, and 20. Six, seven, and 20.
This is approval to purchase legal services for staff through Johnson Jackson LLC.
We got multiple things. Would it be better to take each item separately? I'm inclined to think that. Okay. We have number six. The item is approval to purchase legal services for staff through Johnson Jackson LLC. And that is what we're going to be talking about, okay? Now, I think we started out by saying, does the superintendent have a recommendation concerning this item?
Yes, I recommend the approval to purchase legal services for staff through Johnson Jackson LLC, SDMC number 20-0002-kd revision 1, an additional 150,000, not to exceed 350,000.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation?
So moved.
Okay, it's been moved by Board Member Hope's, seconded by Vice Chair Messenger to approve the superintendent's recommendation. Discussion, is there any discussion concerning this item? Okay, Vice Chair Messenger.
Mrs. Mendel, come on down. There are at least two lawyers who have been quoted in local media who have been hired to defend our superintendent. Terry Harmon from Sniffon &amp; Spellman stated during settlement negotiations.
This is only about Johnson and Jackson LLC.
Oh, oh, okay, then I'll just start. Erin Jackson from Johnson Jackson P L C. In a letter dated 10/31/17, she argued that Saunders had nothing to gain financially or otherwise when it came to graduation rates.
Mr. Chair.
I'm just quoting the newspaper.
This is my item, this is not proper public comment.
Okay, well, how about this? I, I won't, I won't read what was in the paper, I'll just ask that you please not approve any additional legal fundings. Taxpayers would like to know how much of our hard-earned tax dollars have gone toward the legal defense of fraud and corruption, and how much more will you continue to ask us for? We strongly urge that you do not approve any additional funding for the legal defense of the superintendent, but rather you accept her resignation as soon as possible so that we can redirect the funds back to the children and teachers.
Oh, yes, I can. All for order.
This law firm and the rates.
Yeah, I'm asking you to please not approve any additional legal funding at this point. Thank you.
Okay.
This is not a point right now for Mr. Jones.
Okay. Mr. Jones, you know the protocol, you know the consequence. The consequence is you're out of order.
I haven't seen the consequence yet.
Okay, you're gonna see it now. We escort Mr. Jones out, he knows he's not supposed to interrupt.
Don't put your hand on me unless I've done something wrong.
You've done something wrong.
You are damn right. You're not talking to me. 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 You're engaged me. You engaged me. You engaged me. He 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 engaged me. Did you engage me? No, he engaged me. He can't arrest me or move me if he engages me and I respond back. You have a lawyer here seeing everything, he just tried it. Y'all violated my civil rights, man. Y'all violated my personal rights, man. The gentleman engaged me, sir. The gentleman engaged me.
Dave, can we ask him to leave to cool off?
Okay, adjourn?
Can we ask him, no, to leave to cool off and then let him come back in?
No, he's not, he knows he's not supposed to interrupt.
Public comment is over, you can recess. Public comment is over, you can recess.
Mr. Chairman, I move for recess.
Recession.
Okay. Okay, public. Okay, public comment's over for right now. We're gonna be in recess for ten minutes. We were in in items outside of the consent agenda. And it was there was discussion concerning approval of what was number six on the consent agenda, approval to purchase legal services for staff through Johnson and Johnson LLC. Now, I think we've had a motion to approve it. I think there's been a motion to, or a second to that motion. I think that's where we left off and we were in discussion.
It was a public comment.
Okay, we're having a public comment. Excuse me. Thank you for correcting me.
And that was the conclusion of public comment.
Okay, public comments has been concluded. And yeah. The, is there discussion on the board members? Board Member Hope.
I just, I would like clarification from the administration. I think this area of employee legal services does relate to Mister Titlebaum. And I just want clarification that the illegal the legal issues related to the superintendent and the administrative complaint are legal fees that we, the district and the board, do not cover and have not covered. And just clarification of that. Mister Chairman.
Okay. Are you asking me to provide clarification?
From either the district's general counsel or the superintendent, that these fees are not related in any fashion, nor have we paid for legal services for the superintendent related to her administrative complaint.
Okay. The superintendent, would you like to respond to that, please?
Yes, sir, I will respond in part, and then I'll have general counsel talk about what this item is. But what you said was in fact true. The district has not paid for my attorney fees whatsoever. This is about the district's employment or contract services with Johnson and Jackson Service for labor situations within our district. So Mister Titlebaum, you can talk about our contract.
Okay, the chair recognizes Mister Titlebaum to comment on the superintendent's remarks. Proceed.
Thank you, Mister Chair. That is correct. This is an increase in legal services based upon labor law matters and other matters that have been approached in the district. We have present litigation in the Canaan matter and also the Lincoln appeal that was filed. Johnson Jackson was engaged. Based upon the limitations, I have sought additional authority through the, for the, to increase the amount by a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. It is not coming from the general fund, but coming from within the legal budget that's already budgeted this particular year from our settlements. Knowing what is right and what is not right for a settlement this year, it is money being transferred internally from within the legal budget, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other comments or questions by board members? Board Member Kennedy.
Thank you, Mister Chair. Yeah, I appreciate the board supporting, pulling this just because there's a lot of interest around our legal fees. And I just wanted to make sure the board was very clear on exactly what this is for. I just have one question, though. Are we, you know, it's listed in the item. Are we seeing more internal labor, is what I'm looking for, litigation more so than last year? Or is this just kind of improper? I know it says in the word, like, we're not necessarily gonna spend this money. We're just setting it aside just in case. But are we seeing a little uptick in any employee issues that are?
Mister Chair, can I answer?
Okay, Superintendent.
She is the representative for the Joe Canaan case. That is ongoing and has come back into the scene to continue that. I don't know of any other specific matters, but I do know HR utilizes her from time to time on issues. But Mister Titlebaum might be able to give up. Those are the only specific ones that I'm aware of.
Any other questions or comments? Okay. Therefore, the chair will call the question. And all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay. Hearing no nays, I'm sorry. It passes unanimously five zero. The next item is number seven, I believe, on the consent agenda, which has been transferred to new business, non-consent. Please correct me if I'm wrong, but and I believe that, I'm gonna ask that if the superintendent has a recommendation concerning this formerly numbered number seven.
Yes, I recommend the approval to purchase legal services for staff through Bullylock Walters, P A, SDMC number twenty dash oh oh nine one KD, not to exceed one twenty-five. Hundred twenty-five thousand, I apologize.
Okay, the superintendent's recommendation has been moved for approval by Board Member Hope. Is there a second? It's been seconded by Board Member Kennedy. Is there a discussion? Okay, Board Member Kennedy's recognized.
Thank you, Mister Chair. Just same question, just for the sake of being really clear about what we're using this for. Do, again, it's being set aside for possible use, but what specifically are we thinking about right now for this money?
Okay, Superintendent.
Yes, this firm is being hired due to our cyber possible litigation. They filed a complaint and we have outsourced with that firm to handle that case.
Vice Chair Messenger.
Actually, Mrs. Mendel signed up for item number six and item number seven on consent agenda. Sorry. Okay.
Okay, Board Member Golden.
Does the chair know, I'm sorry, does the superintendent know, what is the hourly rate for these charges?
Okay, Superintendent.
I will have to defer to Mister Titlebaum. What is the hourly rate for either one of these firms, sir?
Okay, Mister Titlebaum?
The hourly rate has been negotiated a hundred and sixty-five thousand, a hundred and sixty-five dollars per hour. That has been, that is lower than their market rate, which would be approximately three hundred dollars. It was a negotiated rate.
So, we've just bought a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars worth of legal services at a hundred and sixty-five dollars an hour? Is that what you're saying?
I'm saying that we have not to exceed a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars at a market rate of a hundred and sixty-five dollars per hour. I can do the calculation.
That's all right. I'm just, and I should have asked it for the last.
It buys a lot of hours, a lot of hours.
I know. Okay.
Is there any? Board Member Hope.
Yeah, just wanted the the public to know that the cyber issue, this is around the ERP project and the consultants have filed a complaint in Tallahassee. So these fees are covering the litigation in Tallahassee around the ERP implementation. Thank you, Mister Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Board Member Hope. Vice Chair Messenger, you have that look of me. This is authorization. It's not paying or approving anything at this point. The, what is claimed to be, you know, appropriate time on this would be approved at one sixty-five an hour. Okay. Is there any further discussion regarding this item number seven? Hearing none, the chair will call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. The motion is approved five zero unanimously. Thank you very much. Okay, now we have help me out here. What were the other, wasn't there two other things?
I have number twenty, Mister Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Okay, number twenty. Does the superintendent have a recommendation concerning item, what was used to be number, item number twenty on the consent agenda?
Yes, I do. I recommend the approval of the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty School Safety and Security Best Practices Report for submission to the Florida Department of Education.
Is there a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation?
It's removed.
It's been moved by Mister Kennedy?
Second, and then I have a motion to amend, Mister Chairman.
Okay. How do we do this? Okay, it's been. Okay.
I'll move to amend it. So I've seconded it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve. And along with a motion, an accompanying motion to amend the Mister Kennedy's motion. And, okay, Mister, the Mister, Board Member Hope is recognized for making a motion to amend Board Member Kennedy's motion.
Thank you, Mister Chairman. I moved to amend the motion to insert after Safe Schools Risk Assessment Report to add, and the actionable items discussed during the SHADE meeting held October twenty-second, twenty nineteen at two o'clock P M. That is my motion to amend, Mister Chairman.
I'll second that.
Okay, there's been a motion made and seconded to amend Mister Board Member Kennedy's motion. Is there a discussion?
Yes, sir.
All right, yes, Board Member Golden. Yeah.
The purpose for the SHADE meeting was to discuss our safety and security issues in the shade.
Right.
Right.
And what this motion does, or what this amendment does, in my opinion, is to say that we're incorporating in this motion, in this public meeting, all of those things that we considered in the shade. How do you prove that? How do you know that except to bring it out of the shade? I understand the sentiment. I know where you are. But if you do that, you bring it out of the shade where it was and where it belongs. Okay, so I'm being.
You can be informed of it in the shade.
Well, but what we're doing here is we're incorporating what was done in the shade as an amendment to this motion that we're doing in the sunshine. That's not what we're being asked to do?
Okay. Board Attorney Dye.
Chairman.
Yeah.
I'll address his concern.
Please.
I understand your concern, but the, this does not publish what was discussed during the SHADE meeting. It just approves the action that was taken.
And then how do we, how do we know that everything here that is approved or that was?
There's a record of what was approved in the SHADE meeting. Yes.
So how, is there any way anybody can get access to that as a threat to ourselves?
No.
That's my main concern here. I don't want it to be misused so that we now, what we thought was security and safety is no longer secure and safe.
Right, I understand that.
All right. Then I, that was, that was my concern.
Okay. Is there any further discussion concerning Is there any further discussion concerning the motion to amend Mr. Kennedy's motion? I think that's where we're at.
Right.
Okay.
Have you had further discussion with respect to the motion in chief?
We, we haven't gotten to that.
We haven't amended it yet. We got to vote on the amendment.
On your amendment, okay.
Okay, the, the motion is to approve amendment of Mr. Kennedy's motion, okay? And if there's no further discussion on that motion, the, the chair will call the question. And all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay. Mr. Our Board Member Hope's motion is approved amending Board Member Kennedy's motion. Now, that brings us to Board, Board Member Kennedy's motion. Is there any discussion concerning the amended motion by Mr. Mr. Kennedy at this time? Okay, the chair hearing none, or I guess we have some. Okay, Board Member Golden.
In previous meetings, we have made it a part of our safety and security protocol here in Manatee County, that we would not in any way support, approve, or be involved with teachers in classrooms being, being armed. And I'm, I guess I'm really asking if this report that we are about to approve as our report in any way poses an acceptance of that and that, and adaptation of that? Because I know that, we all know that the legislature is now even considering legislation that's going to require that. So, I, I don't want to abandon that position.
Okay. Now, I'm, I'm going to ask the superintendent if she could respond to that, please.
Sure. It, it did not alter from our existing plan of SROs or guardians. So, teachers are not armed at all. Most of it dealt with capital. So, in funding for capital security needs.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you, Board Member Golden. Are there any other comments or questions? Chair hearing none, the chair will call the question. And all those in favor of approving Board Member Kennedy's motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay. Board Member Kennedy's motion is approved unanimously five zero. Okay, the we have some existing new, new business non-consent items. We have a, it's number one, approval of a new job description for armed security officer. Does the superintendent have a recommendation?
Yes, the super, I recommend the approval of the new job description and position of armed security guard.
So moved.
One second.
Okay, it's been moved by Board Member Hope, seconded by Vice Chair Messenger to approve the item number one of new business non-consent items. The, is there any discussion? Okay, Board Member Golden.
Yes. Does this position description require that the armed security officer be a law enforcement officer?
No, sir. Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I recognize the superintendent to respond, please.
Really, the definition of the, of the guardian is in our schools. So, we needed a new job description because right now we have during the day at our non-school facilities, off-duty police officers or off-duty sheriff deputies. This allows us to have a comparable guardian that is not positioned at a school. That's the differential of the duty in the job description.
Is this during these events or is this post, pre?
During, during the business hours.
Okay. So, basically, what you're asking us to do is to expand the usage of those people who are classified as guardians in schools to non-school, business hour, school board property.
Correct.
But they still have no law enforcement capacity. They, they, they have no arrest power.
They're trained by the sheriff's department, but you are correct. They act in the same capacity as a guardian.
So, they have, as I said, I want, I want it on direct, they have no arrest.
You are correct.
Okay, no arrest authority.
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you, Board Member Golden. Is there any? Board Member Kennedy?
Thank you. I have a couple of questions for the superintendent. And I should, I should have asked you these before, but they just kind of came to me now. But is this for budget purposes? Is, is this position designed to be a, a little bit, that's the right word I'm looking for. A little bit less expensive of a position as the guardian position is? Or, like, I guess what I'm getting at is, is there any, anything that precludes us from using someone who's already a trained guardian to fulfill this position?
Okay, Madam Superintendent.
It, it's equal to a guardian, except the definition and the funding that's attached to guardian, they have to work at the school, at a school site with students. So, the differential is the title. It's the same pay grade. It would be a permanent person, whereas now during the day at our non-school facilities, we have off-duty officers or sheriff deputies. So, it's a rotating person who signs up for that detail. This would give a permanent person that knows the people in the facility a little bit better, because they would be there on a permanent basis.
Okay, now, one quick follow-up.
Okay, yes, now, Board Member Kennedy.
I appreciate that, that makes sense. And then, so by, by the definitions and statute, this means this armed security guard position could not then work on a school campus. This would have to be an administrative building position?
Superintendent.
They could. They're, they're equal training, but you use different funding pots. You can't use the money coming in that allows you the funding source for the guardian that the state gives. We can't use that pot of money for, for the people that are in non-school facilities. So, if you wanted to take this person and transfer them to a school site, they would be equally trained. They will be trained by the sheriff's department and meet all the same regulations that our guardians do.
Okay, that clears it up, thank you.
But it is cheaper than an off-duty police officer or sheriff's deputy, in addition to.
Less expensive.
Uh, yeah, that's what I meant, yeah, less expensive.
That's what I was struggling with, too.
Yeah.
Cheaper than.
Yeah, bad word, yeah.
Okay, any, any other comments or questions? The chair will call the question then. The question is, are we going to approve a motion approving a new job description for armed security officers as recommended by the superintendent? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion carries five zero unanimously. The next item is consideration of approval of a new job description and position of engineer structured cabling. Does the superintendent have a recommendation?
Yes, I recommend the approval of the new job description and position of engineer structured cabling.
So moved.
One second.
It's been moved by Board Member Hope to approve the superintendent's recommendation. It's been seconded by the vice chair. And is there any discussion? Chair hearing none, chair will call the question. All those in favor of approving the motion to approve the superintendent's recommendations, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Now, all those opposed, indicate by saying nay. The motion passes unanimously five zero. Thank you. This brings us to public comment. Is, what do we have, Vice Chair?
You ready?
Yes.
All right, I'll read our typical spiel. Public comment is not an open forum to discuss matters unrelated to education, to support or oppose candidates for public office, or to engage in commercial speech attempting to sell a service or product to the school board or public. Also, public comment is not an open forum to attack individual school system employees or board members. Any such complaint should be submitted in writing to the superintendent for appropriate handling. Finally, this is not a forum for addressing issues involving individual students. Because of privacy concerns, such issues should be submitted in writing to the superintendent for appropriate handling. Each speaker is allowed three minutes to address the board. Speakers must stand at the podium and not approach the dais. If a speaker has a handout to present to the, to the board, those must be given to the agency clerk for distribution. This is a business meeting of the school board, and the public expects we conduct it in an orderly, efficient, effective, and dignified manner. We request that speakers keep this in mind when making your comments. We also request that the audience keep that in mind and not demonstrate approval or disapproval of what a speaker has said by clapping or booing. The board appreciates the public's input and will listen attentively, consider each comment, and usually will not respond, enter into debate, or answer questions during comments on agenda items or during the public comment section. And with that, I would like to also add, we've had a couple of people tonight sign up to speak as a group. And recently, we have been allowing that, and so I'm going to allow that for tonight. But in the future forward, we're going to follow our written policy. Our written policy says to be recognized as a group or a fraction, groups or factions must register with the agency clerk no later than twenty-four hours prior to the start of the meeting. For registration of groups of three or more, a physical, physical signature page will be required. So, I just want to make that clear from this point forward. That is our written policy and we will be following it. But for tonight, Mr. Hunley, come on down. After Mr. Hunley will be Michelle Williams. And then, yeah, we'll start with Mr. Hunley.
Good evening.
Evening.
It's a little anticlimactic since A, it's not being televised, and B, people being arrested in here, so I better be careful. And C, everybody who doesn't want to hear the truth left.
Is he speaking on?
But I want to speak about.
What group?
Can we stop the clock?
He signed up to speak for L M A.
That wasn't, please proceed. It wasn't said that you were speaking on behalf of a group. And are you, sir?
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
Are you speaking on behalf of a group?
I'm sorry, I thought, yeah, I signed up and stated that.
Okay, thank you.
She explained that to you. May I proceed?
Sure.
What I wanted to do earlier was say, hey, there's time to stop the shenanigans. I, I was going to say that prior to the new ones. I want to say that we all have been provided with the information so and that perhaps there was an opportunity to stop. The vote on July twenty-third to immediately terminate as opposed to a ninety-day termination has proven itself, just as Mr. Kennedy said, to be something that you all should have held up on. The suggestion that there was an immediate threat is comprised of two things on that date. That would have been myself and this imminent threat of water being shut off. It's been since established that that water was not going to be shut off. There's evidence that the water wasn't going to be shut off and that Superintendent Saunders and Mayor Bryant discussed it a month ahead of time. When it was paid, we informed Ms. Saunders firsthand. I will be submitting the email showing that we informed Ms. Saunders the bill was paid in full. So, at no time was there a forty-five day past due notice. And we stand here today, almost to the day, ninety days from when this started. And had we done the ninety-day termination, we would have understood that the water bill was not accurate. It wasn't legit. We would have understood that there is no law or any documentation that equates not having a certificate to being a threat to kids. I'm not a threat. We would have known that the accusations sent up to the U.S. Department of Education by who I believe to be members of this staff, Mr. Tittlebaum, Ms. Jenkins, Ms. Tammy Taylor, and others. I would ask that the media ask, they're here, so I can, I can address that. I would ask that if anyone from this district were the ones who sent up those false accusations that they admitted now, or they can do it under oath. So, we stand here three months later, there's no fraud, there's no embezzlement, there's no bribery. There's a school in shambles, and now there's no water bill. And we just approve more money because, yes, there is an appeal, and you are going to have to use that money to try to uphold these lies. The optimism of being able to talk that I walked in here with were doused with that display of bad acting that was set up. So, I'm asking this board that can be so disrespectful as to look down at the ground, I wouldn't be able to look at me either. I wouldn't look at me either. And I, too, at principal's recognition, I served Manatee County in the toughest Title I schools for over fifteen years. And if not for me trying to help kids get even more than what they were getting, I probably would have been with that group that walked up here, the group that couldn't look me in the eye on the way out, just like the group that left because they know it's wrong. But it's, it's going to happen. I'm not coming before this group anymore. I'm just making sure nobody goes to bed continuing to lie to themselves about an immediate threat. And I want you to take the same action. We had a request to wait before we do the superintendency thing. No, got to get her in. Can't do it, can't wait. Oh, that stuff, it's nothing, it'll go away. That proved not to be true. Wait, don't do the immediacy, immediate takeover. No, we got, they got to go. The kids are in danger, who some of you still haven't gone to visit. And now the water bill's fraudulent. So, what started out to be an appeal to, hey, guys, stop it, is now, okay, well, all it is is bringing more attention. I can't wait till the feds ask those questions since the media won't.
Michelle Williams? And after Michelle Williams? Is Mr. Jones allowed back? Okay, then after Michelle Williams will be Betty Rhodes.
Good afternoon. I'm sorry, good evening now. I travel from Tampa, Florida. I'm a civil rights activist and leader throughout this great state of Florida. And it saddens me when I got the phone call to come down here to see what was going on in Manatee County. I have family history here. My great-grandfather was a slave owner. Several black people that lived on our plantation were hung right here in Palmetto County. The chairman said in his accolades regarding the, the new technology of the, the brand-new school that he used the word gorilla. That bothered me when he referenced the word gorilla as the board. We had the whole thing recorded. Hundred and twenty students tossed out like day-old bread, which escalated to a few hundred more. We went to Tall, I mean, so, I'm, I'm sorry, we went to Fort Lauderdale, Florida on a charter bus. We didn't decide the fate of the school board superintendent. It was an E P C committee of her peers that did such thing. I'm bothered by this. It's no secret, I've spoken with the media on my way in. I kind of got turned around yesterday from the, the meeting at the mayor's office. But landed there, God doesn't make mistakes when I seen Fox thirteen and A B C Action News and Channel Eight News over at the mayor's office. I sent them there. There needs to be, there needs to be an investigation here. So, it's no secret, the media's sitting behind me. It's being recorded via live right now on Facebook, social media. Tomorrow, I'm meeting with the F B I again at two P M. This is some very, very damaging behavior that we have in Manatee County. Palmetto, Florida, look at the history. Palmetto, Florida, look at the history. It's in the books, it's online. The worst in the most cases of lynchings right here in Palmetto County. What this school board district has allowed has been nothing mere more of a four-hundred-plus-year education oppression. See, in the days when the slave owner had the house slaves in, they learned the educational system from the slave masters' children and their wives who fell in love with them. Sixty-seven percent Hispanics and twenty-three percent blacks. Oppressive educational slavery. Get it together.
Ms. Rhodes, come on down, and after Ms. Rhodes will be Reverend Mason.
Good evening. I am a little upset right now because of what just went on, and like he say, it's gonna be on social media. And plus, we do have a lawyer here that saw that Rodney Jones, uh, civil rights was violated. Well, I got to tell you all, are you scared of me? I am a person that cannot be tamed. We got the same heart, why are you all so blind to see that? But we know one thing, some of you all up there only see color because we are black. But you know what? We all bleed red. It took a lot of my blood, sweat, and tears to get where we are today. But for the record, we're not going nowhere. We just begin. Manatee County Concerned Citizens for Justice, we not going nowhere. I do not want to pit red America against blue America. We only want, want justice for our children. I was born in Africa-America, brought a brother of my ancestors would die for us. As I stand before you all, I honor them. I am for the truth, no matter who tells it. I am for justice, no matter who is for or against. But one thing I am against is up here on this board, how you all terminate the, the teachers and staff from Lincoln Memorial Academy, it is awful. And you have some right here now who don't did worse thing than this. Don't win with each other, don't dead with each other, but what you did, you brought them up here to the White House and gave them a job as an administrator, which they shouldn't be here at all. They shouldn't be here. So we taking all that into consideration, what you all did. Y'all had to vote for them to get where they at today. And then another thing what I really do not like is this. I am black, and I'm proud of my heritage. And make the record straight, I have a lot of white friends. I have a lot of Latinos and everything. And like they say, they gonna stand for justice. And that's what, all we want. How y'all did LMA, we know it was a setup, was a setup for Rodney tonight. Cause I counted, I came into the meeting, it was eight police officer. You got three recording for they could see what's going on in here now. But what y'all did, y'all didn't want this to work tonight, but guess what? We video it, and we putting it on social media, I'm gonna send it to Sound Seven to let you know how corrupt some of you all are. And like I say, y'all need to get it together, cause we not playing. We not playing. We going for the gusto, and that is to get our school back. Have a nice day, bye.
Reverend Mason, and after Reverend Mason is, Mason is Margie Woodson.
Good evening. I stand here today outside of the box of ministry as a person that, uh, look at the, uh, environment of this local body. I see men that stiff-neck, hard-hearted, untouchable, they think. But there's a bigger person than you all. You all know without a shadow of a doubt. The first night I came here, uh, saw us as a people treated as barbarians. You think you can just say anything, do anything? I said the last time I was here that I came out of an oppression of a school district, Man, Manatee County. I graduated from North Marion High School in nineteen seventy-five. Check the record and probably someone on your board is from that county and that school. Oppression is a bad thing when you're on the other end. It's a good thing when you're riding in the saddle. We went down to Fort Lauderdale two weeks ago, that's why we wasn't here, but we had someone to speak for us while we were gone. And I told you before, and I'll tell you again, LMA not going anywhere. We are a Manatee County, Manatee Concerned Citizens for Justice. And that's just what it is, it's justice. We will get it. The Bible speaks of in Genesis that God spoke to Adam, told him, don't bite off the fruit. But Adam, on a vacation somewhere, Eve plucked the fruit, bit off the fruit, gave it to Adam. Adam bit the fruit, and I know you don't wanna hear it, I know you got your faces down. But when God came to the garden, he didn't even wanna talk to Eve. He said, Adam, where art thou? That's what I asked you, Mr. Golden. Where are you? When time to leave.
Margie Woodson. And after Margie Woodson is Joanna Phillips.
Good evening. My name is Margie G. Woodson. Been here before, probably back again. I'm a true native of Manatee County, raised and schooled in Manatee County. Things have happened here that are right and things that are wrong with the school board. Going along, minding your life, a lot of things go unnoticed and not thought of. But when it's brought to your attention, your eyes are opened, and you see the people that you thought were fair and were honest, they're devious. People that we have elected to be in office are devious. So now that your eyes are opened and you see this devious person, what are you going to do? What is the district? You five people that were elected by us citizens of Manatee County, what are you going to do with this person that has been proven to be devious? This person that has committed fraud? Are you going to be just like her? That's why you think you are not going to do anything about her? You were elected by the people to protect the people. Those children that were born in poverty, they didn't choose to be born in poverty, they woke up one morning, and that's where they were. But they know that that's what they had to live by. You were elected by the people, and I keep saying that because for some point, when you reach this plateau, you forget about the people that you were elected to represent and to protect, the children of Manatee County. People, we look for you to do the right things for our children, for this county. As elected officials, we know your time is short, but while you're here, do the right thing. Thank you.
Joanna Phillips. And after Joanna Phillips, Mrs. Mendel.
Good evening, I'm back. Um, I was the LMA registrar that came to you on seven-twenty-three and indicated that I know, I didn't have, I was the only registrar in the district with no access to focus. And being terminated on eight-twenty-three, it was stated that I was a probationary employee. I was never given a contract to specify the probationary period and was never given the contract again that was dated June twelfth, twenty-nineteen. So how can I be a probationary employee that you didn't allow me to have access to the job duties that I was supposed to do, but then you terminate me as a probationary employee? How can I do my job? How did you expect me to do my job? Yet I had a contract dated months before, a month before you took over. And if I worked for LMA in eighteen-nineteen, I won't curse, but I can't do that. How can I be a probationary employee in nineteen-twenty? You terminated me, and you recommended, and you, you approved it. I, I recommend you terminate her, Cynthia Saunders. And I recommend all of you, go.
Mrs. Mendel. And then Marlena Parm.
I'll start off with a quote. At no time did Ms. Saunders' direct staff to inflate graduations rates and improperly code students. The record clearly shows the opposite of any intent to purposefully skew numbers. That was a twenty-eighteen statement put out by, by the Manatee County School Board. We ask in a minimum this, honesty, transparency, and to put children first. That statement is not honest. What hap, here's what happens when someone from the outside of Manatee looking in, educators with real ethics and morals, a jury of Saunders' peers, said about her actions. Christine Gold, co-presiding officer. I feel like we hold our teachers, our coaches, our, to higher standards. A loophole is being taken advantage of with this. It's a weak excuse for allowing this to happen, especially when you're working at such a high level in a district. It's your responsibility to make sure you're doing things the way they should be done. This level of fraud is concerning. From Rick Mellon, also a co-presiding officer. We're hearing that she's taken ownership and put corrective measures in place, but as I sat and read this, what about those other students? Did we do them an injustice by coding them incorrectly? What happened to them? This settlement was denied because the loophole allowed Saunders to avoid probation and the related sanctions, meaning the ethics course and a requirement to provide all documents and records and tangible evidence requested by the D.O.E. We ask for transparency, but you allow all the documents and records and tangible evidence requested by the D.O.E. to be hidden from the public and kept in the dark? Alicia Corillo, Paula Negreli, under oath stated that they told Saunders what was being done was going to cause the district trouble down the road because it was wrong. Andrea Dossi from Horizons told you under oath that Saunders consistently applied pressure to recode students. Now we hear a teacher at Braden River was flinging kindergartners against walls and dragging them across floors while the principal sits on the allegations for a year. Then the state takes the teaching license, so Saunders suspends Fink for two days, and then ships her off to Ballard for another two years so she can retire with her full pension. How much more do you need to see what the rest of us in this county have seen for years now? I call for the resignation or the firing of Sanders as soon as possible. I speak on behalf of many teachers, parents, and students who are too darn afraid to, of her to say this out loud or even to put it in writing. I'm not afraid. I never was, and I never will be because justice needs to be served for our children. Our children deserve a voice. It's time for Ms. Saunders to go because this community needs to heal.
Marlena Parm. And then Mr. Salazar.
And the charades that just happened momentarily. I actually want to piggyback on something that I started from my last comment. And it was about, um, money that was available for the schools that were in need of it, and how your lady, I don't remember her name, Ms. Garcia or whatever, um, said that the money was available, and when it was asked who determined who got that money, she said it was the district that determined who the money was issued to. So with that being said, that means that knowing the situation that LMA was in, and knowing that there was money that LMA could have been helped out with, the district, and I'm not sure that everyone here is aware, was aware of the situation as far as the money part of it because apparently what we are seeing is that certain people know certain things, and certain people are kept in the dark with certain things. So is it fair to say that money was available and the school was just left to just sink? That seems very unfair to me. Seems like we got a big bully mentality sitting up here at the board. I mean, it just seems unfair. It seems unfair for the school, it seems unfair for the students, it seems unfair for the teachers, it seems unfair for the community who fought so hard for that school. And I hear every, all this negative stuff about LMA, but who, everybody's afraid to speak on the, the great things that happened to this, in that school for that school year? We don't hear that. We don't hear that from the press. We don't hear that from the board members. Oh, we can't, cause they weren't there. Mr. Kenny, thank you for being there. And Ms. Bridget, you definitely have my vote for District One.
Mr. Salazar. And then Mr. Mokwitz.
Good evening. It's good to see you guys again. I've been blessed with the opportunity to serve as the organization that's forming behind me as their co-treasurer. And I look forward to bringing forward more and more issues that create injustices in this county. My issue here is several. How we still have a superintendent leading this school district with everything that she has done. I'm all for chances, all for chances. But I think we've had one too many chances here. And I know you guys are smarter than that, and I know you guys can do your job. So I'm asking you guys to do your job. Here's the thing, you guys are getting ready to spend so much money on legal expenses to protect Ms. Saunders. Legal expenses? Don't roll your eyes, Mr. Minor. I don't want you to be like Mr. Golden who decided to laugh when I was here at the last meeting. Mr. Golden, let me address you for a second if you don't mind. Remember when I was a vice chair of the Democratic Party? And you would walk in with your nice little pastor suit on?
Mr. Dye?
Uh, Vice Chairman, you've got the, uh, authority to warn the speaker that they're violating the policies and procedures of the public comment.
So, this gentleman walks in. I'm not naming any names, Mr. Minor. Give me an opportunity here. Gentleman would walk in, head held high, beg us to vote, beg us to raise money, beg us to donate. And for what? We were literally backstabbed, backstabbed. It's no longer fair. All we're asking for you guys is to do the right thing. This is your opportunity to make it right. I have a daughter who attends Palmisola Elementary. She's doing awesome. I have nothing to gain with being here from protecting this community other than I I have nothing to gain with being here from protecting this community other than I care about these children because I care about my own child. And I want to see the school district honestly do better. But if we're gonna do better, we have to get rid of the illness. The illness that lies here. So let's stop it, let's kill it, let's get rid of it. Start fresh. We want to work with you. You guys are holding that barrier. Let us work with you. I promise, we're gonna see a whole different side to the community and what we can offer when we build a relationship together. Have a good evening.
Mr. Muckowitz? And as I said your name last time, Mr. Kennedy congratulated me for saying it correctly.
There you go, see? You can learn too, teachers can learn. First of all, I'd like to thank Ms. Saunders for being very responsive to an issue I had last year at the end of the year. The next morning, it was fixed. And in the ensuing time, I have found her to be very gracious to work with and responsive to people's needs and concerns. What I want to talk about today, though, is the decision that you made two weeks ago to give an additional, I believe it was, in the area of $90,000 to Just for Girls. I completely understand what the teachers who work at Just for Girls and the student population is like. And my heart goes out to those teachers, but once again, they are a private organization, a nonprofit, they are not a public school, and they have the ability to raise extra funds through charitable giving. And my concern is that since we've got this mill, this what people want to refer to as extra money, it seems to be that there is a roundabout way of taking more funds from the general, from our, from our normal operating budget. First, it was the Sheriff's Department who refused to fund the police officers, so that was a big chunk of money, okay? Then we had the Stand Group, which once again was county money that didn't come to thus again, and now Just for Girls. So what I see here is like, it kind of reminds me of what happened with the whole lottery. We're gonna create a lottery, we're gonna have this additional money to help fund education, but then the general budget got lowered and there was no additional money. And it seems like we have this slowly, okay, you guys got this extra money, so now we can take it from the other pot. And that pot is designed, or should be there, there are still needs in this county. The stipends or the supplements is an issue that we're trying to rectify, to get more money for supplements for the coaches, the advisors. You have, I know there's a, they're having a really hard time getting proctors at MTC because the wage is so low. I mean, the bus driver situation. There are definite needs that need to be addressed within the school system before we start subsidizing groups outside of our organization that have the ability to raise those funds. And I'm really worried that the county and that there's this, okay, you guys got this extra money, so they're gonna keep looking for other ways to take money from us. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. And that concludes public comment.
Thank you, Vice Chair Messenger. Okay.
Hold on a second. Did Mr. Gibilena turn in something for this evening?
He was signed up on the workshop agenda, but nothing on this one, so perhaps he chose the wrong meeting accidentally.
Yeah, we called your name at the workshop. Come on down, Mr. Gibilena.
Appreciate that. For the record, Glenn Gibilena. So the workshop, I'm gonna put my taxpayer hat on, and every time I get my real estate bill, I see three taxes from the school board. So on the workshops, if it's on the agenda and someone's gonna do a presentation, then the public should be aware of that. And even though it's a non-voting issue, Ms. Messenger, the public should have a right to review that information at the workshop, not when I get there. If you're gonna, if you're gonna publicize it three days early and someone's gonna do a PowerPoint presentation or do handouts, those handouts or presentations should be available to the public. I've gone round and round with the BOCC and they finally came around. You should adopt that policy. If they're printing the stuff off at the last minute and walking in and some of the board members don't even have that information prior to the workshop, as a taxpayer, I feel I'm entitled to that information to ask logical questions before I get there so I can do some research. I'm a numbers guy, you know me. I want to be able to research whatever that presentation is to make sure it's on course, it's factual, and if I have any questions, I have at that time educated questions because I've had time to review that. So I think if you're gonna do any workshops or anything on the agenda, it needs to be clarified through the public prior to the meeting. So that said, the overhead. When I go down to board of county commissioners, if I've got a piece of paper, whoops, and I want to show it, I lay it down there, they zoom in on the camera, it goes up on the board, it goes out to the public. If I've got pertinent information that I want to get out to the audience, to the public, and to you, I'm requesting an overhead. I mean, we've got the technology, it's not a big deal. And I'm going to put this into the record. I've got a meeting tomorrow about the impact fees with Doug, thank you very much. But I just want to put this into the record tonight that there are viable options out there to the reducing or eliminating the impact fees for affordable housing. So I'm just gonna put that into the record. Renewable, I'm glad, I'm glad we're moving in the right direction. And here's the thing with renewable. Everybody thinks if I take a 60-watt bulb and trade it out with a nine-watt LED, I get the same looms, but at the end of the day, I'm still writing that check for the nine, the nine looms, okay? Renewable, we're making money at 11%. You can't beat it. And the last thing is, I may not always agree with people have to say, but I'll defend their right to say it. You're on very thin ice on these public comments, I have to tell you.
Thank you. Yes? I don't, have you signed up? The policy states that you gotta sign up before the meeting. Sorry.
Mr. Chair? We just heard from a speaker who signed up in a previous meeting. He didn't sign up for this meeting. If he didn't sign up for this meeting, he ought to be allowed to speak too.
Is everyone okay with that?
Sure.
All right, come on down.
I don't like it.
Wow, damn. Okay, they started at 6:00 AM this morning at Lee Middle and ended at 7:00 at Bay Shore High School for a cross-country middle school regional meet. Had about 60 kids out. It was a big turnout of parents, so always here advocating for those ADs on the middle school level. We work hard. Sure you know about our pay, but we're here. But we just closed out that season, cross-country, and now we're on to soccer. So I'm gonna email you all our schedule and hopefully you can see some board members at some of those soccer, middle school soccer games. So just to remind you all that we're still here. Tonight, Palm View came out and ran. And you know, they are a middle school as well. So their sixth grade team came out and we were very impressed with that, to get them in the fold and get them going with us and what we're doing. But we're always here, working hard. I had an experience this past weekend, I was giving out flyers for MTC. They're wonderful programs over there. The various Walmarts have volunteered. There's a lot of people that are interested in MTC. I mean, getting trades and putting these people to work. So just letting you know, my experience with that, gave out almost every flyer to parents and kids and teenagers and young people. So, well, I know you're in support of MTC, but I had a good experience this weekend just supporting that, supporting those efforts with Omar Edwards and all the other directors over there as well. I think we went to three or four Walmarts in this area, just getting the word out, and that was a great experience. So, but anyway, be looking for something from me with soccer and we'll see you on the, see you at the championship in December. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think that concludes public comment.
Okay, again, thank you, Vice Chair Messenger. Time for updates. The, Mr. Steve Die, you have some updates from the legal department.
Yes, I've got one bit of news. There was a hearing today in the Manatee County School Board versus Lincoln Memorial Academy case where Judge Cohen found that Manatee County School Board was prevailing party in the case, is therefore entitled to award of its attorney's fees and cost to be paid by Lincoln Memorial Academy, Inc. The amount of the attorney's fees will be determined later at a, either through stipulation by the parties or a evidentiary hearing. And the order summarizing that is available from general counsel. That's all I've got.
Thank you, Mr. Die. I think our general counsel, Mr. Titlebaum, has some words to share on this topic.
Mr. Board Chair, I also have a legal update, may I present, sir?
Sure.
Okay. I want to read for our board members in regards to the water bill and that issue that's been alleged. I want to read a letter into the record for this board from Blaylock Walters, from the city attorney, to my office, with your permission.
It's up to you if you want to allow it.
What do you say, board members?
I'm a thumbs down on that. Things are settled, let's keep it settled. It doesn't do any good.
Chair. Board Member Golden.
While I can appreciate the general counsel's desire for transparency, I'm not quite so sure that the ultimate aim, which we all say we'd like to see as we go further, would be peace in the community, I'm not so sure how we achieve that by continuing to keep alive the factual issues that have already been decided. I'm not interested in another recitation of the facts. I'm awaiting whether or not there is an appealable issue.
Okay, I think we got our, we're not, if you have something, let's not do, talk about the water thing right now, okay? And did you have something else along the line of what Mr. Die had to say?
Other than, other than that, I will, Mr. Die's topic, Mr. Board Chair, that there'll be determination within 10 days as to proceed either by hearing or submission as to be solidified by the parties. And ultimately, the inclination was to be submitting it on papers.
Okay, so.
And that, and that it would be enabled, just for clarification, Mr. Chair, it'd be an opportunity for the board to recover any, any legal fees, reasonable legal fees that have been expended by this board for the appeal that was filed by Lincoln Memorial Academy.
Okay, thank you very much. I guess we have a 10-day deadline on that for...
Further action. Said so within the order itself, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
We haven't seen that, but I guess that's something we want to, a deadline we don't want to miss. Okay. Okay, Board Member Golden.
I, you know, I want us to be very specific, in particular, when you say to me that the legal fees with respect to that case against Lincoln Memorial Academy Incorporated, are you talking about the school that is operating over there now, or are you talking about the former governing entities and employees of Lincoln Memorial Academy Incorporated?
Reverend Golden, specifically the former charter school, that's why I referred it as Lincoln Memorial Academy Incorporated. We operate Lincoln Memorial Academy as, through the district, but not the corporate entity that was formed that we contracted with, with that contract that was properly and legally canceled the night of July 23rd, that the Department of Administrative Hearings upheld that termination of that charter, decided by this good board.
These legal fees are against those people.
Absolutely. It's not against us. It's against that prior entity that operated that school for, for over a year.
All right, thank you. Okay, all right, the, that's, thank you for the legal update. The, okay, do we have, how about academic update?
Instructional update, yes, sir.
Instructional update.
It would be my pleasure. We have just concluded our Hispanic Heritage Month and many of our schools celebrated in grand style. I know a few of you were able to participate at select schools. We had an increase in the number of schools that actually participated and celebrated within their community this year, and we'd like to see that continue. So kudos to those schools. Curriculum associates over about the last month have conducted eye-ready parent informational sessions at four of our sites. And I was in attendance at Gullett Elementary where the session was well-attended and many of the families brought their students with them for the evening and it was wonderful to see the students guiding the parents through the process, the technology access that they have, and explaining some questions for their parents as we were attempting to educate all in attendance. So it's great to see our students maneuver through the technology and educate, work with their parents. We had a, two DOE instructional reviews yesterday, one at Lincoln Memorial Academy, the other at Onico Elementary School. And those two schools, as you know, are identified as RD schools within the district. The purpose of the state visits is to partner with our district to make certain that we identify areas of improvement, develop an action plan, and to monitor ongoing progress of the process for improvement. So their next visit will be in November and we will continue to work with our two schools along with the Department of Education. Also, quarter one benchmarks have been completed and so we have begun to acquire our data. It's being disseminated to our schools, we're analyzing the information and designing student support for content proficiency. So our work continues. And as you know, we recognized our principals at the beginning of the meeting this evening for Principal Recognition Month, and I'd like to just extend a thank you to our Manatee Education Foundation for sponsoring our reception this evening. It was a wonderful evening. So thank you all for being in attendance as well. That concludes my report.
Thank you for a great report. Okay. The, it's time for operations update with Deputy Superintendent Wagner. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just have four items tonight. The first one is, so the PeopleSoft recruitment module, if you remember, went live at the beginning of October. We currently have a 20, we currently have 128 jobs posted. 22 of those 128 are in transportation, food service, custodial, and maintenance. So that's actually a low number for us. And we also have 39 teacher jobs, 39 instructional teaching jobs posted right now. So, but I do want to remind everyone that if they had applied in the system prior to October 1st, under Taleo, they have to reapply under the PeopleSoft new recruitment module. So I want to thank the Personnel Department. Wendy Manjello, she's the director, and her and her team have been working hard to get that implemented and it's running fine. So number two, Health and Safety Expo. So October 29th, we have a Health and Safety Expo from 5:30 to 8:00. We're showcasing emergency vehicles here in Manatee County. We're having Bay Flight there, the bomb squad, marine vehicles, SWAT teams. It's an open house also for the MTC East Campus. So we want people to come out and learn about career opportunities in public service and healthcare as well. and healthcare as well. Number three, RAM, which stands for Remote Area Medical. We have, have had that since our last board meeting, we had it two weeks ago, Saturday and Sunday at MTC. So, we had 900 volunteers, and this, this is very interesting. We saw 563 patients for dental, and the value of those services were about $241,000. We saw 575 patients for medical, and we saw, which was a value at $103,000, and we saw 341 patients for vision, and that was valued at $88,000. So, all total, we did almost 1,500 services, and a value to our community of about $432,000. I do want to thank all the doctors, all the healthcare professionals, you know, we had tons of students there, teachers there, volunteers, Walmart was our signature supporter this year. You know, truly, it made a difference in our community, so I want to thank everyone who was involved with that. And my last item, number four, is Stuff the Bus. It took place on Sunday, just a few days ago. We had 17 sites, 17 buses parked at 17 different Publixes here in, in Manatee County. This is interesting. So, last year, we collected 88,000 pounds of food, 88,000, and this year, we collected 105,000 pounds of food. That is a, a lot of food to be collected. We had teachers, students, community members, everyone was out working hard. It's amazing to see a bus pull up empty on a Sunday morning and then leave packed with boxes full of food all the way above the windows. So, I just want to just give thanks to everybody who participated. That's a huge, huge effort for Manatee County, and that's what makes Manatee County great. So, besides Publix and everybody who chipped in, thank you for everyone who was involved. That's it.
Thank you very much. Okay, time for superintendent's remarks. Thank you for being here.
Yes, first thing, I would like to recognize Palm View Elementary. It was an honor last week to go with them to Arizona, where they were recognized by Steve Wozniak and his team as being the first career pathway school in the nation. Many superintendents and personnel were there visiting from Florida, but all over the country, and we were the showcase. The programs that are being provided there are really the workforce that a lot of those students will be competing for jobs in the future. So, Principal Johnson and her teaching staff did an amazing job, and many want to now go visit Palm View Elementary. I say elementary, it's K6, next year it'll be K8. But it, it certainly was an honor, and it really did showcase her school, and the fact that they brought their school from a D to an A was also a highlight in, in her presentation. Couple of other things I would like to mention, and I'd like to just say a few words today. As much as I know that the people that came here to represent Lincoln Memorial Academy, I know they love and cherish the students at that school. I hope that they can realize and appreciate that people who have devoted their careers of working lives in education in Manatee County also love and cherish every one of those students. We now have over 50,000 students in our district. Lincoln Memorial is part of our district. I want to say emphatically and unequivocally that we stand on common ground when it comes to loving the children of this community. I hope it is my prayer that we can all come together and let this kind of find some peace so we can heal and we can move forward. I know this, that the issues that have caused the divisions among us here will not be decided in this room. All of those will be decided outside of our chamber. So, I'm hoping we will be able to move forward in time. I know it's going to take time, but I know we're all willing to work on it. And lastly, I'd like to congratulate Ms. Yost for now not being a temporary, but a permanent. Congratulations, you've been approved. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Superintendent Saunders, and welcome, welcome back from Arizona. We are proud that you were there to represent us. We're proud that what, your representation and being there is a reflection on what you've done here. And it's focused and highlighted great accomplishments in this school district in bringing, you know, Wozniak in and making this a great school that is envy probably around the country. Thank you very much. The, okay, Board Member comments, Board Member Kennedy.
Caught me by surprise again. Just a couple of things, I, it's already been mentioned, but I also want to thank Manatee Education Foundation. The grant awards were tonight, unfortunately, so we couldn't be there. But yeah, it's always a good time, but, but they, as mentioned by Ms. Yost, they did sponsor our event tonight, and Mary and her team are very incredibly generous to the district, and we appreciate their support always. The other thing too, I, you know, I'll be honest, I, people ask me all the time, like, hey, how's everything going with the school board and the school district? And I'm like, you know, things are really good, except for this LMA situation. And, you know, Reverend Golden had already touched on it, and then Superintendent Saunders, you followed up, but the question that is always on my mind is how do we find peace? And, and we will somehow, but, but that, that is my question to my board colleagues, is how do we find peace here? And, and really, as a district as a whole, all of us together, let's, let's find ways to make peace, not to make the situation worse. But finally, to end on another hopefully positive note, you are now official.
Yes, sir.
So, welcome. We had, we had a wild one, our first meeting together, but, but I just wanted to tell Ms. Yost that, you know, when I get around to the district and I, I talk to principals and I talk to APs, there's a lot of respect out there in this district for you, and your knowledge and your professionalism, and I just wanted to personally welcome you as a permanent employee. It's good to have you around. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank, thank you for, Board Member Kennedy. Okay, Board Member Golden.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. To continue on the question that was asked by my colleague, how do you find peace? You don't. You have to have peacemakers. And without a desire to make peace, there can be no peace. What I have found, in the time that I have spent in ministry, which is now about 31 years, is that oftentimes, when people are confronted with the truth, they don't get angry at the liar, they get angry at the people who show the truth. And what we are experiencing here, no matter how hard we try, is not going to make peace with those people who are angry with us only because we have told the truth. And that truth, I don't care how you shape it, I don't care how you mark it, I don't care how you try to mimic, how you try to mimic it, the truth is the truth. And so, all we can do is be strong enough to withstand that assault against your integrity, against your intelligence, against your commitment, against what caused all of us to want to sit up here and try to be helpful to begin with. So, no, there's no, there's no finding peace. Peace is something that you simply decide you will be, and hope that you will find someone who will meet you on peaceful ground. I'm, I'm just, I'm more hurt than I could ever verbalize at how supposedly peaceful people can say such mean and hurtful and negative things, and not, and not expect, or even, but not even comprehend how that is. And to take my silence for weakness, it's not. Sometimes, if you just wait, I heard a minister stand here at this podium and quote scripture. Well, I've got scripture that I can quote. "They that wait on the Lord shall mount up as on wings of eagles, and they shall run and not grow weary, they shall walk and not grow faint." I can quote scripture, but living it is a lot more difficult. And I, I commend you for wanting to have peace, but we will not have peace with people that perceive us as their enemy. There's no making peace with people like that. And I, I just, it, it hurts me to think about how much influence in this community these people may have. And it, it, to me, it goes all the way up to the national level. It's not the only place that has no peace. We're in a country that's in the grip of negativity and hostility and all, we're, we're in the grip of that, but we must stand fast. We must stand fast. For we wrestle not against flesh and blood, we wrestle not against flesh and blood, but we wrestle against spiritual wickedness, spirits in people, in hot places. Spiritual wickedness, and you have to, you, you, after you've done everything you can, you just stand. You just stand. And if the room, if the room, if the room empties out, that will not change the truth. Okay, second, I'm not finished.
Oh, okay.
I don't mind being interrupted, and I, I think... And I, I think my colleague deserves, deserves an answer, because making noise isn't necessarily what brings about making a difference. And I admit, we've heard a lot of noise up in here over the last couple of months, but the difference that has been made is the difference that I say we made on the 23rd of July, when with courage, we took over the operation of that school. Because I believe it is true that had we not done that, that night, that school would not be open today. Or if it were open, it would be open in the hands of a commissioner who is committed to privatizing as much public education as he can. I believe that with all my heart. And so, now is the time to move forward to healing, that's all. There, there, there is no going to have, you, you're not going to find peace with people who only want to make war with you. That's where their strength comes from. People who are thrown to the ground, and they just get stronger because you keep throwing them to the ground. And the Cyclops didn't get defeated until he was thrown in the ocean, where there was no ground. So, I, I, you just bear the pain, brother. That's what you do. I had a man call me a traitor on Facebook and spell traitor, T-R-A-D-E-R. Had a man stand here for three minutes and perform and act and try to impress me with how intensely he was committed to what he was saying, and turned around and walked off and left his glasses. And if the vice chair hadn't said, you left your glasses, I wouldn't have laughed, but it's just funny that you can be so intense, and you can be so angry, and you can be so upset, in three minutes, you forget your glasses. No, that, that's entertainment. That's, that's just one, let me just make noise and let me be seen, and then if I finish my three minutes, I turn around and walk out the door as if that's going to make a difference. If you really want to make a difference, sit down and let's have a conversation. That's not happening yet, and it won't happen with, with some people. So, I, let's stop looking for peace, and let's just have peace amongst us. Let's try to work as a board as we were elected to do. Let's try to keep getting stronger and stronger and stronger. And one day, you'll look up and you'll wonder, where did all that go? Where, where did all that noise go? Now, I too would like to close on a positive note. I want to thank you, sir, for bringing, no, not you, Kennedy, I'm sorry, the guy back there, I'm sorry. It's, no, it's all right, you're okay, man. But, no, I, I simply, the, the reason I had asked for sugar to be recognized is because we all talk about volunteering, but I've noticed something in the year that I've been here, that our volunteering seems to be focused on the school. Come to the school, come mentor, come, come be a part of the school. It, it seems to be focused about school subjects. Let's learn how to read, let's learn how to write, let's, let's bring music, let's improve the, it's, it's, and it's on school days. Come out one day during the week, but, and, and the thing that I appreciated about this organization is that they, they don't operate just at the school, and they don't talk about school subjects, and they're not about just doing it on school days. When I met them, it was a Saturday, they had 100 children putting peanut butter and jelly sandwiches in bags to go feed the homeless. That, that is where I want our school district to go. And yes, I've even talked with them about going over to Lincoln and volunteering and being of help there, because all of our children need to learn more than just about learning. We got a lot to learn about living. We got, we ought to return to being decent to one another and respectful and open-minded. That's, that's, it, it, it's, it's interesting, all of the cameras are gone now, because all of the histrionics and all of the hoopla and all of the hurrah and all of the negativity, it's just not here. And as I've already heard, don't anybody want to hear what the preacher has to say? Then that's fine, but it's still the truth. It's still the truth. It's the truth if none of us want to accept it, if none of us want to believe it, it's still the truth. We are better off today, as it relates to that school, Lincoln Memorial Academy, than we were on the 22nd of July. I think it was the 23rd that we had the meeting. So, yes, we are better off today, and nothing I've heard, nothing that anybody has said has shown me that that's not true.
Okay. Yosher?
I'm done.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Board Member Golden. Okay. Okay, Board Member Hope.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I too want to welcome Deputy Superintendent Yost. Thank you for coming and joining our team. It's, it's, it's really appreciated to bring your experience and your determination to, to the district. And I think, you know, along, along the notes, one, Reverend Golden, is many school districts, not ours, but hopefully we will one day, many school districts require community service as a graduation requirement from high school. And I think that's something that we can, we can consider. You know, with regards to the situation in Palmetto, members, I'm, I'm confident that if we maintain our focus on our core, which is student success through academic achievement, we will work through and rise above this, and we're already beginning to see that at that school, and I have visited the school recently. On a lighter note, a group of us with Deputy Superintendent Wagner and the folks from MTC and a number of individuals from the Sarasota Manatee Airport Authority and architects and engineers, visited Embry-Riddle University and their Aviation Maintenance Technology Technician Program. And one of the neat things that fits in with Palm View is, is one of the projected greatest demand for professionals in this field is drone maintenance. And as you know, members, drones are a part of the Palm View program at the, with the WAS program, and these students who find the interest and passion in that will be able to transition from Palm View to MTC's programs and, and come out with basically what's the equivalent of an associate's degree in aviation maintenance, technology, and, and technical services. And Mr. Kennedy, I will tell you that something I, it was so surreal, I'm going to send you the pictures. I had the opportunity, I've, I've piloted many times a jet across country, but never a small airplane, and the country's very different from 10,000 feet. So I went from the shores of the Atlantic to the shores of the Pacific, landing in Santa Monica. I had committed to, to meet the superintendent in, in Phoenix, but literally that day I spent 11 hours in the cockpit and I didn't have 30 minutes left. So we planned to land in Tucson and, and cut it short, but any of you who have driven 12 hours or 11 hours, you can imagine what it's like in a cockpit of an airplane. But Mr. Kennedy, I grew up in, in Texas during the oil boom years, and I was astounded in Midland, Texas with oil well pumps that date back to the 40s that are pretty much self-powered, they haven't changed, surrounded by windmills. And I mean hundreds of windmills. And I can tell you, the further you go west, the more renewable energy you see. Arizona was loaded with solar farms, but, but the pictures of oil wells, and when I say oil wells, there is nothing in Midland, Texas but oil wells, but now there are windmills. I don't know why they had the windmills there, they're generating electricity, they're not powering the oil pumps, but, but, but at any rate, we, I think we will be bringing to the board at our next meeting, some pretty, you know, exceptional designs and programs through our partnership with the, with the Airport Authority, and, and I look forward to it. And, and I too pray that the, the community around Lincoln can come together. We are all up here focused on every single child in Manatee County, to afford them the greatest opportunity for an exceptional education and, and success. And we really need to move beyond the past. And it's been hard on all of us, and it does not reflect well on our community because that's not what this community is about. This is not why my wife and I decided to retire here, and I know we're better than that. And, you know, I join the Reverend, I really do. I pray and I hope that this soon will be behind us because those children, those students deserve everything that we have to offer. And as adults, as adults, we need to demonstrate how to communicate, how to behave, and how to lead. And that's not what we've seen at these meetings lately with regards to these folks that are so passionate about that, that community and that, and that campus. And we, we will overcome it, but it, it is time, it is time to come together, and it was refreshing that we actually had speakers tonight who before had been critical, that actually talked about collaboration and partnership and coming together. So I hope we see more of that. With that, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Board Member Hope, Vice Chair Messenger.
Well, I think everybody said what I feel like needs to be said in regards to ongoing situations, and I think that we just need to keep in mind that, you know, this is about the kids, and we have to leave the negativity, the misinformation, everything else at the door, and remember that this is, that's what this is about. Whenever I make a decision, I'm thinking about my daughters. How would I feel if they were in that situation or this situation? And that's what this is. That's what this is for, for all of us, thinking about the students. With that, the only other thing, I like to be short and sweet, you know, with that, I'd like to just highlight that the showcases schools is coming up, and for anybody out there that's still listening to us at 8:40 at night on a Tuesday night with their cart and popcorn, that, you know, any schools that you want to learn about, all the different programs that we have, there's a lot of amazing programs that have been added within the last year under our superintendent, and she's, I think, been pretty visionary on that, and adding a lot of programs in, in Title I areas. And so there's just a lot of wonderful programs, this is a great way to learn about all those wonderful programs. So I would encourage people to go. It's November 13th, we have one more board meeting before that, but that's just the next day after that, so I want to put it out there, November 13th, 6:00 PM. You can learn about a lot of different schools and a lot of different programs that are available, so. The Civic Center, I'm sorry, it's not, it's not called that anymore.
Convention Center.
Convention Center, yeah. The name changed, you know, it was very, it was a big thing. I'm on them.
Okay, well, thank you, Vice Chair Messenger. I think everybody here is reflecting, you know, feelings that I have too, and information, there's so much going on. The, I feel real privileged to, you know, participate in quite a bit what's going on, but certainly not all of it. And I, I get a little teary-eyed sometimes when I am at an event, I don't care if it's a football games, and I try to get to most of them, or it might be events, you know, over at the Convention Center or downtown, and I, I think that this district with our superintendent as our leader has done, you know, so much, particularly in the last, you know, couple of years, to make this, you know, a terrific school district, you know, for all of our children. Sometimes, you know, steps are a little harder than others, but we are certainly going in the right direction to make this, I, I think, you know, the best, you know, school district in the state of Florida. And I, I think we are grateful to everybody and for the opportunity to serve here, to be, you know, part of this. And that's about what I have for tonight, and I'm going to call this to adjourn. It's been a long night, a long day. Thank you for the privilege of being with you. We are adjourned.
Thank you.